Carol, you said you added some bills. Are you going to add them in the morning or something?
What I sent you out for the list of bills is, already includes it.
Oh, all right, okay.
It's all the Santa Buckley Energy ones at the end. All right, it's 7 o'clock, you are live streaming and you are recording. And you are on mute, Mr. Mushon.
Yes. Thank you very much. It's 7:00 PM. We'll call to order this meeting of the Town Council. I note that we have present with us all five of the councilors, Councillor Golembeski, Mataronis, Moore, Wallach, and Mushon. So we have a quorum, and we will begin our meeting with a public hearing. That public hearing, as it turns out, needs not be performed. It was advertised. However, both owners have withdrawn their requests for movement of the line of the business zone, and therefore, we are to accept those withdrawals, acknowledge them, and take no further action. I would entertain a motion to accept the withdrawals of Mr. Lemos and Mr. Morrison. And...
So move.
A second.
Motion is made by Councillor Mataronis, second by Councillor Golembeski, to accept those withdrawals. Is there further discussion? Last but whoa call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. So the motion carries 5-0, and appreciate those timely notifications from those folks. The next matter of business is approval. Well, we'll close that public hearing. Next matter of is the approval of minutes of the February 18th regular meeting of the Town Council.
Motion to approve the February 18th, 2021 council meeting unless anybody has any comments or questions on it.
Second. Motion is made by Councillor Mataronis, second by Councillor Moore, to accept those minutes as written. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. So that carries, and the minutes are approved. The next is the minutes of February 25th, which was the special meeting of the council in order to approve the budget proposal for the coming fiscal year.
I'll make the same motion for the 25th, February, January 20, February 25th meeting.
Take a month, anyway.
Second.
Motion is made by Mataronis, second by Moore, to approve those minutes as written. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you. By way of announcements, I have three. There may be others, and you're welcome to bring those forward. The first is vaccinations. To everyone who is listening to this and who will listen to it, the web-based link for appointments has now been restored. You are encouraged, if you're 65 or over, to seek an appointment if you have not yet received a vaccination. The governor is very much pushing the idea of getting everyone that can be vaccinated, so we look forward to that opportunity. But you should no longer be impeded by a problem there. Visit the town's website in order to start the process, and it should be rather simple from that point forward.
Bob, can I cut in?
Sure.
I actually went up to the site today. I got my shot today, and I was a little apprehensive, but they're doing just a tremendous job up there, very organized. I was probably maybe 20 minutes in and out. They will get right along. The shot didn't bother me, so I would recommend anybody that needs to get a shot to get a shot. It was nothing at all to get it done, so very, very well organized. I'd like to thank all the volunteers and the policemen and the firemen that are up there taking care of it all, so they're doing a wonderful job.
Very good. Thanks for that endorsement, and I would second that motion certainly. Everybody that is eligible, do it, and if you... Yeah. Yes, ma'am. The clerk has a question.
No, I just want to make a notation. I just checked the website, and all of the appointments have already been spoken for.
For the coming round?
The 11th, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I suggest that people use the state sites and CVS and Walgreens, because at this point, I don't know if we'll be doing more local ones. We will finish the set of people that we started these four weeks for their second shot, but I'm not sure that we'll be authorized to do any more after that.
Well said. To some extent, we are dependent on extra doses being suddenly and rather without a great deal of notice being given to us, but only then can we accept more appointments. So that process is, at this point, encumbered by that reality. Okay, thank you. The second announcement I'd like to make is, under the emergency authority that you granted me as the Town Council under the COVID situation, I've taken action to direct the fire chief to take the steps necessary to propose the hiring of a new, of a replacement firefighter EMT. One of our firefighters has tendered his resignation. He's moving on to another department, and we can, we need to move quickly to bring before the council a candidate for appointment to fill that person's spot, hence my invoking of the emergency actions. I will be back to you as soon as we have more information, and I won't wait for the next meeting to tell you about it, but we'll hopefully, at the next meeting, be able to act on that. The third announcement is simply an encouragement for you to take a look at the Sakana Times if you haven't done so. There's 25 members of the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade who have achieved high honors and 30 more who've achieved honors situation status. And in this time of otherwise news that is, boy, things aren't the way they used to be, the Little Compton Wilbur McMahon School continues to march on with just superior performance by a whole bunch of kids, and really pleased to see that. So take a look at that, and be proud of what we've got here in Little Compton. Are there other announcements that need to be made? All right, hearing none. There are five, seven department head reports, including that of the administrator before us. What I'd ask is, I would entertain a motion to place these on file, but before we do that, if anyone wishes to pull one of those out of that sequence, please let us know that, and we'll do that, and then make the motion for the remainder.
Motion to place the seven reports on file unless someone does speak up, want to pull one.
Second.
Motion made by Golembeski, second by Mataronis, to place on file. Is there any discussion or any that ought to be with for discussion?
Mr. President, may I intervene?
Sure.
I have an apology going to Councillor Wallach. I made reference to her as Councillor Anya there, so I apologize for that.
Shows how attentive I am. I didn't notice.
Okay. Bottom section of the report where make reference to the vaccination-related expenses, you know, make a reference to your support in contact with the governor's office.
Well, thank you, and...
I apologize.
Call me anything, just don't call me late for dinner.
We can invoke an infrequently used rule that says you have free rein to call him Administrator Tony anytime you like. Is there any further discussion? Then a roll call vote for that motion. Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you. The next item is that of new business, and what a pleasure it is to tell you that the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank has in fact announced its municipal resilience program action grants, and a total of $1,500,000, of which Little Compton submitted a proposal for $164,000 and was granted every dollar of that proposal. We are to match that with 41,000 of our own funds. That is a four-to-one match, and we've done that using primarily already committed funds that were, for example, intended to repair the beach parking lot, or they were encumbered funds in the highway department. So we are very, very grateful to the Infrastructure Bank. Let me tell you who else we're very grateful to, and that's Larry Anderson. I'm pretty sure I'm speaking for Tony Texera when I say that the three of us who were your, what are we called, the action team or the...
Core.
Right.
Core team.
Core team, core team. We, Tony and I, would have been very hard pressed to pull off what happened. Larry Anderson made this happen in so many ways and stayed so intimately connected with the process that we, I mean, I would have been stunned had we not been seen as a major participant, and that's in fact what happened. I just want to publicly state how much I appreciate Larry's leadership, frankly, in this whole process of making sure that a, that a, an unfolding drama that was this grant was done in such a way that we came out victorious. It's just, thank you very much, sir. I notice, I believe you are online with us, and we are about to address another matter in which you have said you would like to resign from that position, and we would regretfully entertain that as well. But on behalf of the town and the Town Council, thank you. Administrator, did you have anything?
You said it all. You know, I concur with every word you said regarding our friend and colleague, Larry.
Okay, thank you. So we're off and running with this in the sense that we know what we need to do, and we will satisfy those requirements. Mr. Anderson, who is with us, has tendered a letter of resignation from the core team and asked that the council replace me on the core team, of course, remain available to provide information, records, or assistance as they may deem useful, which I expect we will. I have further received from Councillor Wallach her intent, or her desire to serve in that capacity, should there be, should that be the council's decision, and I would heartily endorse Anya being the person that we would appoint. But before we entertain that, perhaps just, Larry, did you have anything that you wanted to pass along?
Yes, thank you. And thank you. Thanks, Bob, for those, and Tony, for those generous comments. It's been an intense year on a number of counts, so the fact that we were able to do all this within a year's time, literally, you know, is was a lot of work, but we accomplished a lot together, and I wanted to thank the two of you in particular for your support and for your efforts. And I did want to say again, as I did before, I think in a previous meeting, that in terms of putting the grant requests together, we got a lot of help from Bill Moore, Public Works Director, the Beach Commission, especially Don Madero, so their help really assisted us in providing, producing a concrete focused request. And of course, I think we all have to be grateful for the 25 or so citizens who participated in an intense, short workshop that gave us real meat to work with, both for this project and for other things going forward. So it was a community effort as well that has a payoff. The other things I point out, I did zoom into the Infrastructure Bank's board meeting when they approved the grant and actually approved some additional funding so that they could provide grants to all the applicant towns. This year, they bumped up their allocation, I think it was $500,000, so they could provide all these grants to the communities. The executive director, Mr. Deal, made sure to comment. He said, "We're 39 for 39," by which he meant that this project, though a grant and not a loan, was the first business that the Infrastructure Bank had done with Little Compton, which meant that they are now working with all 39 municipalities. So, but I do think that's important on this count, is that we were able to establish a working relationship with them, and as you go forward with your capital plans that you're already developing, we've opened a door. In that regard, I noticed that our contact, Sean O'Rourke, was recently promoted there to a position called Director of Program and Business Development, so he may be the actual contact for some of the loan programs. So, and the only other two comments I'd make were in that regard, I'm reminded, Bob and Tony, that when we talked to them about fashioning a grant, they were quite enthusiastic about things that had been identified during the workshop, in particular, as I recall, matters involving municipal solar possibilities and local solar, local renewable energy grid of some kind, local energy grid, and we couldn't manage that for the purpose of this grant, but I do think it's worth keeping in mind that they did give us some encouragement and are interested in those kind of projects which were identified by our community workshops. So I think that's worth keeping in mind. So again, from my part, I do think that going forward, where you're going into the execution stage, that, you know, you'll benefit from a different set of skills and having someone working with you, in Anya's case, who's got some official authority. I'm just an ordinary citizen now, but I do think it's important in the execution to perhaps have a council member working with it. And the final thing I'd say, I suppose I or one of us should contact Sean O'Rourke or the Infrastructure Bank to notify them if there's a change in our core team. So I'd be willing to do that and copy, copy the rest of you, just to let him know, or one of you might do it. I'm not sure, but I think we should do that.
If you would be willing, I think that is exactly the right person to say, you know, that you have been replaced, and here's the team, and I'd be grateful for that if you do that.
I'll go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Is, with that said, then, is there a motion to appoint Councillor Wallach to the position formerly held by the former councillor, Larry Anderson?
Yeah, Bob, I would like to officially thank Larry, accept his resignation, and thank Larry Anderson for all the work he did on this, write a letter from the council thanking him, and then the same motion, appoint Anya Wallach to be part of the core team.
A second then.
Motion then is made by Councillor Mataronis, second by Councillor Moore, to take those actions. Is there any discussion?
Just thank you, Larry, for all your work.
All right, a roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you, and thanks again, Larry, for all that. Literally, would not have been possible with any of the rest of us. The next item of business is new business two, a letter from Stetson Eddy, the Secretary of the Zoning Board, offering draft revisions to the zoning board's rules and regulations. What's your pleasure here? Do you want to look at these and come back to a subsequent meeting for approval, or are you ready to approve, or where are you on this?
I'll assess along with the solicitor for his comments before we make any movement on it.
Thank you, Gary. In fact, I looked at it many times. They're excellent. They needed to be done, should have been done years ago, so they're great. So I'd move that the council approve of the changes.
Okay, that, that works for me, then. If he's on board with it, then I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it, but I'd like some discussion.
The motion is made by Mataronis, second by Golembeski, to approve the proposed changes, and just sort of go ahead.
Just, I noticed some of the structural changes they made in there. The fee went up $100 from $350 to $450. They want now 23 copies instead of 13 for filing, which I'm not sure why. The reason the fee, I understand, but I'm not sure why the copies increased. And, and, Dick, on item 10, on the last one, it looks like it got rewritten, but it didn't italicize, so I was having trouble reading it, trying to figure out what they actually did there.
Yeah, no, I had them today. I didn't bring them tonight, Paul, because I've been over them maybe three times so far. I think they're all justified. It just, even though 23 copies sounds like a lot, it actually streamlines the whole process, because oftentimes, we're back and forth between the planning board and the zoning board, and if we can make the applicant's life a little easier upfront, that's what it does.
All right, well, and that's, that is my concern. I don't want to put any more burden on the applicant, because these things can be onerous enough when you're trying to do something.
So is the point of number 10 to just require that there be a timely decision within 20 days? Is that the new?
Yeah, that's right. And so, Anya, what we try to do, although it's sometimes annoying to the zoning board, is we draft two decisions, denied and granted, so we try to have it ready for them so we can get it right out. Because it's sort of archaic, but on the other hand, when someone's applying for relief, they really need the relief now, and oftentimes, they have to apply, and they wait till the next meeting. For example, we didn't have a meeting, we will have a meeting till April, so, yeah. Thank you.
Carol had a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that they're really not changing anything in 10. They're just clarifying what state law already requires. It's really just cleaning up the instructions, because when someone applies, they get these rules and regulations given to them with the application, so it's just an explanation for the applicant to know how the process will be.
Thanks.
Okay, I've got my answers. I'm good.
Any other discussions? Then we'll ask for a roll call vote on approval of the proposed changes. Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you, and thanks for that clarification. The next item of business is a letter from the United Congregational Church requesting permission to use town landing for Easter sunrise service with COVID restrictions imposed.
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by Councillor Mataronis, second by Councillor Wallach to approve the motion. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you. The next is a letter of resignation from Laurie Anderson resigning from the Board of Canvassers. By way of explanation here, the process then would be, and has already been initiated, to seek from, in this case, the Republican Town Committee, a nominee to replace Laurie Anderson, which I would then bring back to the council and propose as the replacement.
So, so a motion to accept the resignation letter?
Yes.
With thanks, and that automatically sets us on a course to find a replacement?
And you can make that certainly part of your motion if you wish, to accept the resignation and thank the person and initiate replacement action.
There you go. So move.
Motion is made by Golembeski, second by Wallach. Any further discussion? A roll call vote on that motion. Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. The next is a resolution adopted by the Coventry Town Council requesting the General Assembly approve and enact or an amendment to Rhode Island General Law 4452 by adding a section which relates computing the 4% cap imposed by this section of the general law in tax levy calculation.
Does the town administrator have a comment on this?
I would just recommend the receiving file, really. It really does not, I don't think we really want to weigh in on that.
Okay, that was my thought also, so I'll make the motion, place on, place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Mataronis, second by Moore, to place on file. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you. The next item is a copy of resolution adopted by the Central Falls City Council requesting that the Governor and General Assembly support after-school and summer programs for Rhode Island youth.
I'm not sure that this pertains to us, and I'm not sure that we get any funding for doing anything for summer programs down here in Little Compton. So I've got to make the motion, place on file.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mataronis, second by Golembeski, to place on file. Any further discussion? A roll call vote then, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. The next item is a copy of a resolution adopted by the Central Falls City Council urging the General Assembly to pass the Civics Literacy Act, which is House Bill 5028, which would require all students between grades eight and 12 to complete a course in American civics proficiency.
I think this should be passed along to the school committee if it hasn't been, if it has been done so already.
It, at least from the resolution, does not appear to have been passed to school committees.
I don't think we should be weighing in. I think it's a good idea, but I don't think we should be weighing in on something that pertains to the school.
Well, how about we, how about we forward it to the school committee for their recommendation, and if they want us to endorse it, we will. Let them make the call.
Second.
I guess I just made a motion.
If my Zoom is accurate, I hear a motion from Councillor Golembeski and a second from Councillor Mataronis to pass this this resolution to the school committee seeking their response and any action that they would like the council to consider taking. Is there any further discussion?
I just think Councillor Golembeski should not go to auctions.
I'll come home with the pink elephants.
Hearing that, I will still start with Councillor Golembeski being at the head of the...
Aye. Get me out of trouble, please.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Thank you. The next and third of the resolutions from Central Falls City Council is a resolution urging the General Assembly to pass misdemeanor reclassification, Senate Bill 118, for the protection of immigrant families.
I don't have a comment on this one.
I mean...
It would either have to go to the solicitor, or maybe the police chief.
I knew that was coming, Gary, but not to the solicitor, because I have to prosecute the cases. Okay, so I don't want to be in a position where I endorse the law or didn't endorse the law. If you want to send it to the chief, we've got one of the best in the United States, so I think maybe that's best.
Send it to the chief?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to send this to the chief for his comments and report back to the council.
Second.
Specific, then, the motion is to pass this resolution seeking comment from the police chief made by Councillor Mataronis, second by Councillor Moore. Is there further discussion? Roll call vote, Councillor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councillor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councillor Moore.
Aye.
Councillor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushon, aye. Question aye. Uh, finally, the consent calendar.
Motion to put, place a consent calendar on file unless anybody would like to pull anything for discussion.
Second.
Motion made by Mataro, second by Moore to place on file. Any further discussion or, or comment? Roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbesky.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Question aye. Finally, the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made by Gollumbesky, second by Mataronis. Any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbesky.
Aye.
Councilor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Aye.
Councilor Wallach.
Aye.
Question aye. The motion passes. The bills are to be paid. There are no further visits before us. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Good night. Bye.